A word of prayer, please. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, once again, thanking you for this opportunity to come and study your word, to discuss your word, and what its meaning is to each and every one of us. We're so thankful, once again, to have Rob here to lead this session, and we're so grateful that he's taken the time to not only write this book and write the study guides, but also to give us his thoughts around the background of the scripture and what it means to him as well. Lord, we, once again, thank you for all many blessings and love, most important, your saving grace. Lord, thank you for everything. Be with us as we study your word. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All right, I'll turn it over to Rob.
Hi, everyone on Zoom. Can you see me? Can you hear me? Okay, great, good. Billy, can you talk? I mean, can you communicate? Can we hear you? Try to say something.
Yeah.
Oh, he knows.
Unfortunately, I can't.
Mr. Tuck said he don't want to hear you. I do.
Yeah, that's right.
We, can we hear you, Billy? No, not really.
I can.
You know, tonight, we're going to talk about the middle, the attitude. And this is the one that is of so great importance for us. It's important because it talks about hungering and thirsting after righteousness. And righteousness is really the key to the Beatitudes. It is right in the middle because it is the, it is the link between, between the first three Beatitudes, which are about our relationship with God, and then the next three Beatitudes, which are, is our relationship with others. So we had the vertical relationship with God, and now we have the horizontal relationship with other people. So in the middle of that is the key, which is righteousness. And it is also used in the eighth Beatitude too, so that's the focus. One of my, my favorite sermons I've ever preached, and I preached probably close to 2,000, I figured out one time, was done about five years ago, and it was called Meet Me in the Middle. And it was based on the Gospel of John, chapter eight, verses one through 11, or maybe I should start at the beginning. Early in the morning, Jesus came to the temple, and sat, and he sat down and taught them. The scribes and the Pharisees, the Pharisees brought a woman who had been caught in adultery. And placing her in the midst, they said to him, "Teacher, this woman has been caught in the act of adultery." Now, in the law, Moses commanded us to stone such women. So what do you say? This, they said, to test him, that they might have some charge to bring against him. Jesus bent down and wrote with his finger on the ground. And they continued to ask him, and stood up and said to them, "Let him who is without sin among you be the first to cast a stone at her." And once more, he bent down and wrote on the ground. But when they heard it, they went away one by one, beginning with the older ones. And Jesus was left alone with the woman standing in the middle with him. Jesus stood up and said to her, "Woman, woman, where are they? Has no one condemned you?" She said, "No one, Lord." And Jesus said, "Neither do I condemn you. Go, and from now on, sin no more." Most of you remember that passage? Did you all hear me on the Zoom? Okay, good, just not. Okay, so when I was in middle school, I was in seventh grade, and I lived, oh, I'd been to, it was in junior high. It was actually called junior high back when I grew up. Junior high, everybody remember that? Yeah. And that's when you, this was great, because I loved junior high, because you got to go from class to class. You know, you didn't have to sit in the same room with the same teacher, who you didn't like that much anyways. And so you got to, you got a variety of different teachers, some you maybe didn't like too much, and some, right? Some you liked a lot. And so what was really neat about that, and plus, we had gym. We didn't have to go out in the playground and run around, you know? We actually got to have, we, we got to have organized athletics, and that was neat too. So it was really fun, but it was a little scary too, because, you know, when the bell rang, you only had three minutes to get from one class to the other. So it was kind of frightening, and I was kind of a shy kid somewhat. And so, and another great thing they had was Study Hall. And I remember Study Hall, that was going to be my favorite class, because I realized that I didn't actually have to listen to my teacher, and I could actually sit there and do my homework. And I thought, boy, this is great, because I won't have to go home and do my homework. I can do it right here on Sundays in Study Hall. And so it was about, we were only about two months into the semester at seventh grade. And, and I had two, my friends were sitting on either side of me. They, they were tables, just like these eight-foot tables. I think some of you might have experienced that yourself, and we had them lined up. And I, two of my buddies were sitting on either side of me, which was really neat, because we got to choose our, our seats. And what they did is they took a piece of paper, and they put it in front of me. Well, I had my book, and I was reading it like this, and I was studying. But they were using that piece of paper to play tic-tac-toe. And I thought, well, I'm not playing tic-tac-toe, but if they want to do that, that's their business. They might have finished with their schoolwork and homework, so they just want to do it on their own. Well, the next thing you know, unfortunately, the Study Hall was run by the athletic director, the gym teacher, who was about 300 pounds, and it was all muscle. So the next thing I know is my two friends went choop, and I was left with a tic-tac-toe board, the tic-tac-toe paper. And the teacher, all of a sudden, I didn't see him, but I sure felt him, because he put his heavy hand on my right shoulder like this. And it just about crushed my collarbone, and he said, "What are you doing?" I said, "I'm studying. I got my book. I'm reading. I'm, I'm, I'm working," and he said, "Stand up." So I stood up, and he said, "Come over here." And so I came over there, and in the middle of the Study Hall, and the Study Hall, of course, if you went to school, and at school with about 500 students, you know that there was quite a few people in that Sunday School, kids, seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. And there was a table, an eight-foot table in the middle of that, and he told me to stand up on the table in the middle of the whole Study Hall. And then he, then he proceeded to take out his wooden paddle, which at that time looked like it was about eight feet long and weighed about 200 pounds. And he proceeded to walk me three times. He told me to bend down, and he proceeded to walk me three times, told me to get down. I did not cry at that point, and told me to go to the principal's office. And I, you know, after talking to the principal, you know, he said that I had to stay after school for detention for a week or two, I think it was. And I said, "Well, can I call home?" And he said, "No, no, you can't do that." And so I said, "Well, I wasn't really doing anything wrong. I was just, I was just sitting there studying." It was my friends on either side that were playing tic-tac-toe, and he said, "Who are your friends?" And I said, "I don't remember their names." Now, you have to understand that, you know, my favorite subject in school for the first six years was conduct. I had straight A's in conduct. I had never been disciplined in my life, and so I'd never gotten in trouble. And outside of recess, that was probably my favorite subject. Well, it humiliated me in front of all those people, and it also made me really withdraw. I had a lot of, a lot of situations, a lot of complications for my first year in seventh grade, the rest of the year. I remember that, you know, I would call mom and tell her, "Mom, I feel sick, you know, I need to come home. Can you come get me?" And things of that nature. And that lasted for probably almost, I'd say, half the year at least, until finally, they called me into the principal's office, again, with my parents, and, and the man came in and apologized. And that pretty much ended that situation. But, but what is, so, you know, Tony talked last week about his story. What really struck me about that, when I thought about this passage from the woman caught in adultery, is that they brought this woman right in the middle. You know, all the people, the, the people in town, put her, sat her right there in the middle, made her stand there. And, and she was surrounded by these people who were accusing her and pointing their fingers at her and about to stone her. Now, I didn't commit adultery, but, but, but I did, you know, get in trouble like that. And when you read that passage, you find out, and this is the wonderful thing about, what was so wonderful and struck me so much, is that when you read the passage, you realize that Jesus actually came and stood with her in the middle. And, you know, it moved me, because, and it still moves me, because I realized that that's what Jesus does for all of us. I think in, in my message, I said that we are all the women caught in adultery. We may not have committed adultery, and some of us men have committed adultery in our heart, as Jesus says, but we've all committed sin. And he who is without sin casts the first stone, and that is exactly what Jesus was so wonderful about. He actually came and stood in the middle with her, and he said, "Where are the people that condemn you? I do not. Just go and sin no more." And he came to the middle, and that is what is so significant, you know, to me. And that is a kind of a capsule of what, of what we begin with, is the situation that this is the middle Beatitudes. Can you think of any other times about the middle where it's significant in the Bible? Anything that, you know, kind of strikes you?
Jesus was in between two thieves on the cross.
Exactly, and, and Jesus was between two thieves on the cross. And so he was in the middle, between one man on one side and another man on another side, and he was able to mediate that. Anybody else kind of thought of any? How about in the, when God created Adam and Eve, he said, in Genesis two, it says that he, he made the tree of life and the tree of knowledge of good and evil, and they were in the middle of the garden. It was right in the middle. There must have been surrounded by trees, and then there must have been an opening. And in those, in, 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 in that middle was, in the center of that was these two trees, and you had a choice between which tree you would choose. And Adam and Eve, of course, chose the tree of knowledge of good and evil, rather than the tree of life. And the middle is very important, because First Timothy says that Jesus, there is only one mediator between God and man, and that is the Lord Jesus Christ. He is the only one that can mediate between God and ourselves. And so when Jesus chose to make this Beatitude right in the middle, between the vertical relationship that we've talked about for three weeks, and the horizontal relationship, when we're talking about over the next three weeks, we'll see how important that is, because he needed and wanted to stress the fact that this is very, very important. It's very significant. And so that's the way we begin today, is thinking about it as really the, the heart, the heart maybe, because the heart is in the middle of our bodies, and the heart of the Beatitudes is found in this particular, in this particular Beatitude. The first thing he says is, "Blessed are those who hunger and thirst after righteousness." And I say on the top of page 37, he's got the cart in front of the horse, that the cart can't push the horse, and the horse, and, and cart can't pull the horse, and the horse can't push the cart. What do you think I meant by that? What was, what was the point I was trying to make across here? What would you say that, you've heard that saying before, you know? What does that mean, pretty much, you know? Buddy?
Wouldn't it be that we put other things first, and Jesus last?
Exactly.
And Jesus first, and all other things?
Yes, we put other things before Jesus. We put our relationship with, our relationship with Jesus oftentimes stands in second base. For example, what are some things that we do that we sometimes find ourselves putting above Jesus? Or what do we think sometimes the horse is, rather than the cart? I'm not speaking personally, but just what people do. What do they do sometimes? Material possessions, for example, a bigger car, a bigger boat, a bigger house. You know, people live in a materialistic society, and it's very important. Our family is sometimes even put, you know, Jesus said, "He who loves, loves their family even more than me is not worthy of me." And I know that, you know, that's hard sometimes, because we may love our, our husband or wife, love our children sometimes. Well, not all the time, no, not all the time, that's for sure. But we put them on a platform, maybe, you know, and that's really interesting. You know, when a baby's born nowadays, they really make a big deal of it, you know? I have a, you know, some relatives that just had a, had a baby, and, you know, they put on Facebook, about every month, they have some sort of big celebration with signs and new outfits and all that, and, and, you know, and I, I think back when I was a kid and was born, my parents said, "Uh-oh." They didn't put me on Facebook or anything. They didn't have Facebook, and they sure, sure, they, they hardly even took a picture, so. But sometimes our kids, oftentimes our, our husband or wife, what are some other things? Okay, that's, that's good. Angel said, "Work." For those of us, or some of us who are workaholics, you know, we put work before us. My, my, my son's, he is a sous chef, and he has an executive chef that is kind of his boss. And he is executive chef at two restaurants. He works six days a week, probably 12 hours a day. He has a wife and two children, and they hardly know his name, because he doesn't come home hardly ever. And finally, one of them got COVID, so now he's home for two weeks. So that's one way to get them home. But some of us are workaholics, yes. Our work sometimes stands above it. So those are all examples of putting the cart before the horse, you know? And we've got to make our relationship with Christ the most important thing. That, that is really what we need. So then on the top of page 38, I talk about what Jesus said. He said, "Hunger." Can you believe that 805 million people in the world are undernourished? I mean, you know, that is, that is totally incredible to me. And then I go on, and I, I state that the facts show that, and even in America, it is estimated 6.8 million households suffer from being underfed. They don't get enough food. I find that incredible. You know, when, when we went through this pandemic, we lived right across from Roseland Park Elementary School. And you remember during the pandemic that the schools were handing out food bags at lunch? And, and, you know, they would, the parents would come by, and they'd pick them up, these bags. And, and I was astounded. I mean, I have to say, I was totally shocked. I have never seen so many cars down our street than I did when these people, every day, would come and get food. I thought, I cannot believe that people in Pearl River County, or Pickyun, I guess it was, are that underfed, that they have to come, or they feel they need to come in order to get food. I find that incredible to me. I just can't believe it. Some of us get hungry real easily. You know, for example, I, I, you know, Mark's been talking about fasting and things like that, and he says that he's not much on fasting, because he likes to eat a lot.
Fasting just means one last scoop of bluebell.
Yeah, he says that fasting means one less scoop of bluebell for him. For me, and you can even check with my, the woman who is not the horse, but the cart, the one that is my wife, and she knows that about one or two o'clock, if you, if you want to, if you want a civil husband, then you better feed him, because my metabolism is so high, isn't that right, Joyland? That, you know, I just, I just can't, I can't, I can't, I can't function very well. And she says that I get, what is it? Grumpy, or crabby, or, you know? And so I have, I have difficulty fasting completely from food. And I think some people might be that way, especially with high metabolism. But, you know, hunger is a real thing for me. I mean, I asked Joyland, "Are you hungry yet?" "No, I hardly ever get hungry." She doesn't hardly ever get hungry. I can't understand it. I'm hungry after two hours. You know, I got to feed myself. I'm like the birds. We, you know, half the gulf inches in the Pickyun are in our backyard. I mean, it's incredible. I put food out there three times a day, and they just fight and squabble, and they eat as much food. They're eating all the time. I'm kind of like the bird, you know? I need to keep eating all the time. And so I can understand what hunger must feel like. I can't imagine someone, and you see these pictures of, of kids overseas, and their bellies are swollen, because they haven't had anything to eat. I just can't imagine that. And Jesus is saying that, you know, that we have to hunger for this thing, that one thing, like the people that are starving. And the second thing, what is the second thing he says? Hunger and what? Thirst. And so I brought my, my water with me tonight, and this is, this has, this has the picture, I mean, this has the letters "mom" on it, because it always reminds me of Joyland's mother, because I think it was hers originally. And it reminds me of hers, but my, my wife tells me that I need, and this is what it says, according to medical people, scientists tell us that the human body is comprised of 70% water. So we have almost as much water as a watermelon, probably, or cucumber. They're loaded with water. I think they're 80 or 90%. And we need an average of nine to 13 cups a day of water. How many people drink nine, nine to 13 cups a day? I mean, you know, she stands over me and says, "Better drink more water. You're going to get dehydrated. You work outside all the time. My metabolism is high, so I have to drink lots of water." Now, I'm not sure if it's true, if you drink coffee, or tea, or something like that, if that's considered water, but some people do not like the taste of water. That's because it doesn't taste like it. But they tell us that we have to replenish to, we, we have to replenish our body fluid with, with, you know, with water. You know, this constant, constant thing that we have to do. And you look in countries where there is very little water, like in the Middle East or in Israel, and they know what it's like to be really, really thirsty. And I have to say, I know what it likes, it's like to be really thirsty, because, see, my wife has trained me on having, maybe not nine to 13 cups. What would you say, hon? Five to six? Yeah, something like that, somewhere in the mid-range. But she's trained me so well, that now, when I go outside and I realize I'm thirsty, and she says, "Once you realize you're thirsty, it's past thirst," right? I worked for the post office for a year, and they didn't let us take water on our routes. And so, ah, you talk about thirst, boy, I'd come back, and I went to that water fountain. I just drank, and drank, and drank, and drank. It was so good to taste that water. If you've ever been really, really thirsty, it just tastes really, really good to have, you know, that water go down your throat. It's just in your mouth and down your throat. It's just, it's just really great. So imagine what it was like in those days, in an arid land, to be really, really thirsty. I mean, you know, it, it had to be something that you really, really needed. Matter of fact, you remember when Jesus was on the cross, and he said, "I thirst," you know? That's kind of interesting. But Jesus isn't just referring to physical hunger and thirst, is he? But he's using that as an illustration and an example for what we would call spiritual hunger and spiritual thirst. And, you know, this is something that's really significant for us, because he's teaching us what? That we need to what? Desire to have this righteousness. It needs to be one of the highest things that we look for. It has to be the horse in front of the cart. And what is that righteousness? What, that's the key to this whole passage. What is it? What is righteousness? You, buddy, have any thoughts on that? Very keen. Go ahead. That's right, a close relationship with God. You know, Pastor Jared spoke this Sunday about a walk with God, and what he was talking about is a relationship with God. And of course, Lyndon knows the song, I think, probably. "Just a closer walk with thee, Jesus granted is my plea." I don't know the, and. "Walking close to thee, dear Lord, let it be." And then there's another song, and it goes like this. "I come to the garden alone, and I can't, and you know, and he walks with me and talks with me along life's, you know, way." And that is exactly right. The thing that we should look for and seek above everything else is a relationship with God. Think about the Garden of Eden, Adam and Eve, you know, they had a relationship with God. Anytime they wanted to talk to God, they weren't like on Green Acres, where you had to climb the telephone pole to get on the telephone, you know, and say, "Mr. Ziffel." These were, just think about that. In the Garden of Eden, they go, "Hey, God." And you say, "Yeah." Or, "Lord, yeah, here I am." You know, they just had to say his name, and there he was, because he was always there, you know, present. I mean, there was no division. There was no separation. There was no alienation. There was no sin. There was no, no problem. So they just, they just walked along, and anytime they needed a God, they'd say, "Look at that, God. What is that?" And then God would tell them, you know? And so there was a, this, this relationship that they didn't, you know, they took for granted. They just had, had that relationship with God. So that's the kind of relationship that God wants us to be restored to, but it's hard, because what happened to Adam and Eve? Did they lose that relationship? They did. And when they lost the relationship, because they sinned, and they took of the tree that was in the middle there, the tree of knowledge of good and evil, immediately, they fell into sin, and that separated and alienated them from God. And then they would go, "Hey, God." Hello? Hello? Lord! Hello? Hello? Are you there? After they sinned, they, that, that connection was broken. And that is why we always get the cart in front of the horse, is because from the time we are little, we really don't hear God's voice. And if we shout to him, or we yell to him, or we talk to him, we don't really hear him talk back to us. So it's difficult for us to have that communication between God and us, as we are, in this state of sin. So something has to be done to break that, you know? Something has to be done, so that the lines of communication can be, can be repaired, just like Zoom. So people can talk to me. They can't talk to me now, but, you know, so, so what happened? How did that, how did that communication wiring get rewired? How did it change? What, what, what made it so that we could actually, maybe not like Adam and Eve, but at least have some sort of communication with God? You know, was there something that took place that changed that for us? Yeah? Jesus' sacrifice on the cross? Good, good. And so he reached out his arms, one, to one on left and one on the right, and said, "It is finished." And when he said that, he meant the debt is paid. That's what that generally means, that telasthe. It means the debt is paid, and the debt we owed for our sin is done with. And, you know, I spoke the first week about, you know, once, or the second week, that once you have dealt with your sin and brought it to Jesus, then there's no need to fear, because he has forgiven you, and he will always forgive you, because the debt is paid that you owed. You owed a debt to him, and he paid it for you. So there is, there is no problem anymore. There's no alienation anymore. There's no separation anymore. There's no distance anymore. There's, you know, as far as the east is from the west, so our transgression, transgressions has been removed from us, so that he could create that kind of relationship with us and bring us back to God. That's why he reconciled us to God, to bring us back to God. When he stood in the middle with the woman, that's what he was doing. He was saying, you know, "Your sin is forgiven you. I'm standing with you right now. I'm standing with you, because this is like I'm standing on the cross. I'm dying for you, and I'm right there in the middle with you. And now we have a relationship with one another." I can almost picture Jesus putting his arm around this poor woman and just saying, "It's okay. You know, you are forgiven, and now we can build on a relationship with one another." So, see, Jesus did that, so that he would demonstrate to us that now we can have that relationship opened up. I go into great detail about what the word righteous means, and, and, and for those of you that are really interested in the, in the technical theological language, there's an appendix at the end of the green book, which talks about righteousness, and I go into some, some greater theological, technical depth on that. But, but the important thing to realize is that, is that the relationship that we have is both past, present, and future. And that we can, and, and that when, that righteousness is something that is, that we have and possess, because we do have that relationship with God. Righteousness itself has three basic parts. We can see this by the analogy as past, present, and future. There is a declared righteousness, which happens when we first trust in Christ, when we first trust in Christ. He declares us righteous. He forgives our sin. You know, he says, "You are righteous." That was what started the whole Reformation with Martin Luther. He realized that once we trust in Christ for the first time in our life, then we are declared righteous. We have a relationship with him. There is imputed righteousness, which means that we now presently have a relationship with God, and that we can communicate with him. And then there is a completed righteousness, which means that we will, that, that we will have this relationship even beyond death. We'll even beyond death. And in fact, I believe that when we get to heaven, we're going to have a great relationship, not only with God, but with each other. And that brings me to my point, I think, that we need to think about. What is it about a relationship, say, with a person, a friend? You know, I remember a man said to me, I asked him, I said, "Do you have many friends?" And he was a Christian man, and he said, he said, "I have a lot of acquaintances." He said, "Well, let me put it this way. You know, I have friends that are about, I have acquaintances that are about fill up a whole pond, but I have friends that are about, only about an inch deep, because, you know, I have very few." Think about a friendship. What does it take to be a friend for someone? If you want to be a friend, what do you do, or what do you say, or how do you act? What are some things that you might do practically? What are some things that you might do practically?
Trust.
What's that? Charlie, he talked? I heard his voice. Would you, trust? Did you say trust, Charlie?
Yes, I did.
Yes, okay. So in other words, for example, um, uh, my wife trusts me and I trust her. So you have to have trust in the person. You have to have trust someone that's not gonna go gossip if you start telling them certain things that you don't really think you want the public to know. And so there is a intimate relationship there. Um, have you ever had a friend who you could not trust? Yeah, there's some that do that, right? See, people, people you thought you could trust. Who do you trust was the old game show, wasn't it? Yeah. Um, so trust is very important, Charlie. That's good. Um, somebody else? Okay, Angel? Acceptance? Absolutely. You know, one of the basics, I think, for a, a relationship and friendship is that you can let the bars down. You know what I mean? Uh, you, you, you don't talk to your friend like you would talk to an acquaintance. And, and because they know a lot of your details about your past, maybe or present, and they don't know much about your future, but they know a lot about you. They know how you tick. And that's one of the things that I've noticed that women are really good at. Uh, for example, you know, when my wife goes to her Bible study on Tuesday afternoons, they spend four hours. And they spend about fifteen minutes studying the Bible and three and out, three hours and thirty, forty-five minutes talking and relating. I don't know what they talk about. I hope it's not me, but they talk. And uh, so because they're friends and they, they're not just acquaintances and they unload, I guess you'd say. Okay. Being together, Charlotte, is very important. I mean, you know, widows realize and single people realize that loneliness is something that is really hard. Uh, because all of a sudden you look around and they're not there anymore. And you get used to them being around for good or for bad. But you're close to one another. There's a, a daily relationship with one another, you know? Um, you know, when they get up and you know, you know, when they go to bed and you know, when they brush their teeth and you know, about time to take a shower and you know, all the little details about their life. So there is that, that for those of us who are married, there is that, that sense of, um, we know a lot about our spouses, don't we? We really do, um, probably more than we even think about oftentimes. So that's good. Well, another thing we do is of course, we uh, sometimes share with each other. If you have a friend, you'll share something that you think is really, you know, if you're going through something really difficult. Um, you know, Stephen ministers here maybe realize that, you know, that um, that's one of the things that they do is they oftentimes are able to listen to those who want to share something in confidence. I've had a couple of people recently, um, both former, uh, former parishioners of mine that have asked me to be their pastor. Well, you know, I was their pastor. But it's interesting to note that, that they want someone to talk to. And someone to share some things with that I will not share with anybody else. So that's really important to do that. And usually a friend is someone that you can do that with and someone that you can have that relationship with because you know, we're heavily burdened, aren't we? I mean, we have a lot of, a lot of things that are going on, you know, health issues or uh, emotional issues or sometimes a lot of family issues, um, things that bother us, things that scare us, things that make us nervous. And sometimes it's good to be able to share that with other people and that's, that's important for building a relationship. So Mr. Tuck, humor is important too. Yeah, I haven't heard God tell a joke much, but uh, sometimes he does have some humorous things I've noticed in the Bible. There's some, there's some pretty good humor in that, like when he talked about a camel going through an eye of a needle. I think that's, I, I, I think that's pretty interesting. Tongue in cheek. Um, what are, any, anything else that you can think of that builds a relationship? What's that, Eloise?
Unconditional love.
Unconditional love. Okay, yes, yes. And so um, when we get married, um, from this day forward till death do us part. Yeah, unconditional love. And that is exactly what God has for us, isn't it? I mean, that is really, really important to know. That no matter what we do, no matter what we say, no matter what we think, our thoughts, our words and our deeds of sin, that he still loves us. You know, he loved that woman. I mean, just think about that. The whole crowd was about ready to stoner. They thought she was, I mean, you know, it's interesting because the, 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 the woman, they, they have the woman there, but what about the man? I suppose he did, did something too. I mean, it wasn't just her. And all these men are standing around about ready to stoner. I don't know where the man was. He was home, maybe having coffee or something. But you know, he, he showed her love right when she needed it and it saved her life. So unconditional love is that relationship, that agape that we have, that, that, that God loves us and we love God with that same thing. The men could have been accusers. That's right. That's exactly right. The, the man could have been among that group. Because, yeah, yeah, that's very true, very true. So to think about those ways that we build relationships in life. And we're gonna talk about relationships because we're gonna talk about the horizontal, the next three B attitudes. Is the way that Jesus has that relationship with God, that righteousness. And that's exactly what it is. Now, how do we practice that? Um, how are, what are some ways that we can have a relationship with God? What are some things that we can do? Okay. That's fine. Spend, that's right. You have to spend time with God every day, absolutely. No matter how you do it. You can talk to him. You can listen to him. You can study the Bible. You can do a devotion. All those types of things. It's very important um, to do that daily time with God. And I know some of us are working too much to spend much time, but some of us are retired. We got all the time in the world just about. So spending time with God. How about Angel? In service for God? Yes, definitely. That's exactly right. Like, uh, like ran into these two gentlemen right here, Charles and, and uh, and the guy behind me, Mark. And they were doing their thing for uh, for Backpack Ministry. They were down at Rosen Park School. And they had all the rest of them and they're doing it too. They were, at ten o'clock, did you have more people this time? They had a lot more people this time. I mean, when you do something for other people and do service and um, you know, that is, that is definitely what you can do for God. That's, that's building a relationship. I mean, it's like washing the dishes for your wife. Or taking out the garbage. You're doing things for other people. You're, you're doing it for the Lord.
Rob, this Karen.
Yes.
Hey, I was just gonna
This, this is one of my former parishioners, actually. Does anybody know, uh, you can't see her face, but does anybody know, uh, Dr. Tom McRaney? Or Karen McRaney? You, okay, a lady in this room, Karen, went to high school with Tom. He used to call him Tommy, but that's Luanne Watkins. Was that your maiden name? Mitchell, Luanne Mitchell, that's right.
Okay.
So, um, anyway, that's who that is. And they had an office down on Sixth Avenue. Um, some of you may know that or not. Okay, Karen, we're gonna try to listen to you now.
I was just gonna say that I don't do a whole lot because I live out Can you hear me?
Here, make sure your mute button's off.
It's off. Can you hear me?
What's that? Oh, push the spacebar.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear her.
No, no, can't get it. So, Rob, I heard a bit of what she said, but I couldn't get the rest, so.
Well, I'll just say it. If anyone can hear me.
Okay, somebody else, uh, have a relationship with God that we can do? Well, obviously when we go to Su- Sunday worship, either on Zoom, I mean, on uh, Charlie, go ahead. She's trying to talk. She is trying to talk. We can hear her.
The Zoom people can hear her.
Let her say.
Okay. I just
Okay, I can hear Charlie.
I wanted to say that I, I stay home a lot and don't get out much, but I've tried to help people by making their appointments to get their COVID vaccinations, people that aren't able to use the computer. Though someone else can tell Rob what I said, but that was just one way to try to help others.
Charlie, can you say, rephrase that? Tell me what, I heard bits and pieces. Charlie?
Karen said that she, what, how she's been helping is she helps others with their COVID shots to try to get that.
What are uh, some other things that we can do to build our relationship with God, would you say? Well? Service to other people. Okay, good, good. What about um, time and prayer to God, talking to him? Do you ever listen to God? Try to, okay, Charlie, go ahead. Were you gonna say that?
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay, listen.
Sometimes listening is as important as, as speaking.
Yes, sometimes listening is very important as well. Oftentimes too, I like to go uh, someplace where it's really quiet outside. Cause I love being outdoors, so uh, that, that's when I try to listen to God. At least when the kids aren't on the playground, that's usually helpful. The buses aren't coming to pick them up because that's very noisy, so. Well, we can build relationship with God and this relationship by doing many of the things that we've spoken of and, and, and many others as well. And, and the, and, and the thing that we need to do is to strive to hunger and thirst for that. Because we want to speak to God and God wants to speak to us. We want to communicate. A little bit better than what we're doing on, on Zoom right now, but we want to have a clear connection with him. So, so that is really building a relationship with God is what Jesus wants us to get across. The final thing that I want to talk about is um, the fact that we will be satisfied. He says, um, it says, for they will be filled. On page forty-one in the book, we talk about um, uh, being filled. And I, I, I note that there's a, uh, the actual Greek term here is really not filled. It, it means uh, kord, kordkazo means to be basically fed. For example, um, you know, uh, when I have my meal, I'm fed. Doesn't mean necessarily that I'm filled, but I'm fed. I'm satisfied with what I have. And so there's a good sense in which we become satisfied with what we eat. Uh, and we, and, and we've, we are, we've become satisfied with the thirst and that we've been given something to drink. And there are two great episodes in the life of Jesus to illustrate this. The first was the wedding in, at Cana in Galilee. And here the host of the wedding ran out of wine, which was an embarrassment, embarrassment to him. And so Jesus was called upon. He instructed the steward to fill the large jars with water. And then in there, Jesus turned the water into wine. Everyone was happy. The jars were filled and all were satisfied. He, he satisfied their thirst. The second episode was when Jesus fed the five thousand. It was in the wilderness and the people were hungry and there was no food except for refuse fishes and loaves. Yet Jesus multiplied this tiny amount to fill the whole multitude. And the Bible tells us that the people ate and were satisfied. The people fed and all the people were satisfied. So what is this telling us? I think it's telling us that we have, um, that when we seek him, he will meet us. When we seek hunger for his righteousness, for that relationship, then we will have a relationship with him. We will be satisfied that he meets us there, just like the woman in the middle did. She, you know, came and, or he came and he stood in the middle. And I imagine that when he was there with her, she was satisfied. That she had sought someone and she found the one that she had sought. So my, so my real encouragement and exhortation for us tonight is that we would seek a daily relationship with him, and I think you said it really well, is that throughout the day to walk with him, to build that relationship with him, and then as we grow, we'll see him more clearly in our own lives. Finally, in the end, we will see not through a mirror dimly, but face to face, as Paul says in First Corinthians thirteen. And so I think that we can really understand that this is a great promise for us as well as an encouragement to us. So that's my encouragement for you today, tonight. Um, any other questions or any thoughts on what we've talked about or in the book or even on what I've spoken about today? Great. Yes, it's amazing how God individually attends to us. You know, I think about the billions and billions of people in the world. And I think some people don't really have a relationship with God because they don't think that God has any attention for them individually. They think, well, you know, there's millions, billions of people. Why would he care about me? I don't know if sometimes we actually feel that way, you know? Well, who, why would God care if, you know, I have an ingrown toenail or something, you know, that, you know, or, you know? Why would he care about little things in my life? But I think you're right, Mark, in that, that God is so big. And yet so, so caring. He is so relational. It's amazing. But Jesus did that to show us that. Yeah, to show us that he is a big God. He cared for every one of those people on that hillside when he fed them. And he cares for every one of us. Yeah. Any other thoughts or um, comments or questions or anything else? Okay, well, I'll go ahead and close with prayer. Now, next week, we're gonna uh, have a little special thing coming up. And um, it's a surprise, so I'm not gonna talk about it anymore. I'm just gonna say it's a little bit of surprise. We've had two, uh, we've had two guest speakers so far. But um, next week, we, we might have another one. I'm not sure, but, but it'll be a good, good week. We're gonna talk about the next week is, oh, boy. Blessed are the merciful, for they will be shown mercy. We're gonna talk about the first area of our vertical relation, our horizontal relationships with other people. And one of the prime characteristics that we ought to have towards other people. Well, I thank everybody that's been on Zoom and I was gonna have Eleanor pray tonight, but uh, I can see that she's not gonna be able to communicate it. So um, I'll close with prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for this time together with all these, these fine people, these people that have come and participated in the class. I thank you for their, their love for you and their desire to learn from you. And I thank you for even more for your, your love for them and your desire for them to build on their relationship with you. Whatever stage in our life we are in, wherever we are in building that relationship, Father, encourage us to do something more, to talk with you more, to listen to you more, to study you more, to serve you more, to do something, Lord, for you, so that we can indeed get the horse in front of the cart. Thank you for our time together. We love you and praise you in Jesus's name. Amen.